If I can have everybody's attention, I'd like to call the May 12th, 2016 meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education to order. First on our agenda is the welcome, invocation and pledge with Ms. Roach.
We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Please bless all who are suffering in any way. Please salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have before us an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
A motion by Tom and a second by Nancy, all in favor? Unanimous? Okay, and first on our agenda is, under presentation and discussion items, is the construction update, Mr. Tom Whitting. How are you today?
Great. Good afternoon. Well, we are pleased to report significant progress on each of our projects really throughout the district, starting with our high schools. Denmark High School, we conducted the pre-construction meeting with the selected general contractor, Mallor, last week. The building permit is in finalization. Erosion control and some of the preliminary activities you will see begin next week. And in earnest, the groundbreaking will be May 25th. In the interim, the contractor will continue buying out subcontractors, ordering long lead equipment, so we'll hit the ground running out there soon. Moving over to West High School, we have completed the procurement process, and hopefully in the latter part of this meeting, we'll make our recommendation of the general contractor to you. And pending your approval, we already have pre-construction meetings set up with the county tomorrow morning at 8:30 to get that job. But starting with some of the projects currently under construction, out at North High School, you've seen that. Area photo before, it's more the white roof of the additions of the classrooms and cafeteria kitchen. That's all now substantially complete, as is the exterior rendering of now the new competition gymnasium. To give you a feel for that interior, you see the wood flooring down now, that's from a few days ago. Bleachers will be in the next couple of days, so the gym is nearing substantial completion. This gives you the initial view of the cafeteria, which is really an example of each of the three high schools with the food court environment. So not only is that a significant enhancement from a functional perspective, but also aesthetic, and it lends to a really improved environment. That starts to give you a feel for the magnitude and volume of the rows of the various food court selections from the kitchen side. Here's an aerial view of South, so now you see, again, the white roof section is the completed cafeteria, kitchen, and classrooms, additional ancillary, along with the flying new competition gymnasium. You see now work being in progress in the courtyard between those two building elements. There's a good shot of the completed interior of the gym. And even these shots really don't capture, if being there in person, not only the, yeah, the size, the magnitude, but the crispness of a new facility.
I love the blue beams.
I had the chance with the local school council at South, and it must have been Tuesday, I think it was Monday or Tuesday, we toured, and like the shot you just showed is like half, it doesn't show the bleachers on the other side, but the sheer size of the thing. But I can't give enough credit to Bell Four. They were, their tour was awesome. They were very, so proud of their work, proud of the products they were doing. It was like they were showing their own house, and really impressed with how well it was maintained and taken care of. It didn't look like a mess.
Right.
Every little detail was above and beyond. It was really fun.
So moving on to Lambert, at the lower part of the screen, you see the band room completion. In the upper right-hand corner, again, the white roof is the 24-classroom addition. That gives you a feel for some interior space that happens to be a science room. Moving over to Central, you see the connection now, the new entrance, the rebranding of Central connecting East and West Campus. There's a good shot of the new cafeteria, same food court design, but yet each is a little unique. You'll see South, Central, and North, they all have a little different enhancement that makes them each, each unique, but the same theme of the food court. Obviously, improved media centers, not the media centers of yesterday. That's rapidly nearing completion. Moving on to the middle schools, we conducted a similar pre-construction meeting with Kevin Price Construction, the general contractor for Liberty, North Middle School, Otwell Middle School, and Vicari. The contractor is currently doing the same process I described on West, the erosion control, the long lead items being procured, with the global idea, we start construction after the last day of school to mitigate existing operations impact at each of those four middle schools. So each of those get some renovations, some portions of that will be complete prior to the fall return at each of those four middle schools. Moving on to South, you now see the same, same white roof as the new additions, and the fingers flanking the original three quarters. Shot of a typical classroom, similarly Riverwatch complete, similar classroom. Out at De Sana, you now see an aerial view of substantial completion, that's a little closer. Gymnasium is really the last building element of that project that's currently underway. And we're all going to be touring that May 25th, along with Brandywine. Brandywine element through school, you see the site there now, we're currently working on just the final stages of irrigation and sod and landscaping, some interior shots. Brandywine, if you recall, was a prototype, so that's the main, Main Street long quarter prototype interior shot. And that is the new cafeteria, kitchen, and that's the end of our program. Any questions?
Looking good.
Yeah, it's coming together nice, the programs is, as well as not only finishing the first phase, but getting a good start on the next second phase.
So we're feeling good about the timeline and everything opening on time and that kind of thing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, now we have Mr. Rick Gunn.
Before Rick, you can come on up here, want to, before Rick starts, just really make a couple of comments, if I may, about the FY17 budget proposal. First of all, I want to compliment Rick and his team for all of their work in putting this together. As you know, we went through a very significant transition with our finance department last fall, when Mr. Jones left us and went to Fulton County. We were very short-staffed for several months. A couple of our new hires are actually here this afternoon, Steve Atha, our new director, is here, as well as our accounting coordinator, Chris Knobler, is here this afternoon, and I know they have meant a lot to Rick and the finance department.
Thanks, because I didn't know.
Getting things moving back in the right direction. I also want to thank all of our cabinet members, our directors, our principals, for helping us put this budget proposal together. As is true in most budgets, nobody got everything they wanted, that's typical. We had to set our priorities and make sure we took care of the most critical needs. The proposed budget that we're presenting this afternoon will have revenues exceed expenditures for the second year in a row, which we're really proud of. This year, to the tune of about $2.7 million more revenue than expenditures. We will have increased our fund balance by more than 30% over the last two years, which you know we absolutely needed to do. Now, our projected fund balance for the end of FY17, over $52 million. That's important for future bond ratings, that was intentional on our part, we want to make sure we try to get the highest rating possible, which saves us significant dollars in the long run. Also included in this budget is a 3% cost of living adjustment for all employees. We will also be able to support step increases again this year. I do publicly want to say again how much we appreciate our governor and the legislature for increasing funding for K-12 schools, and we certainly have used those funds to take care of our employees. This budget also calls for staffing for two new schools. As Tom mentioned, Brandywine and De Sana, we're getting ready to open in the fall. It also includes some additional growth positions that Rick will go over in just a moment. It also includes our first payment for the proposed Alliance Academy, that's part of this budget. I believe it's a very smart, fiscally responsible budget that will continue to provide the resources and support for our students and teachers, so we can meet the very high expectations of this board and this community. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gunn.
Thank you, Dr. Burden. Tonight, I have a PowerPoint for you that we usually do each year. Of course, it's been spruced up and updated a little bit because of my new staff. It's not the same old black and white that I, myself and Dan, used to do. They put a little bit of a spin on it.
It's efficiently in the 21st century.
Yeah, they dragged me kicking and springing, but I'm getting there. You also have, for your reading pleasure, your usual handbook. It has everything I'm going to go over that's in the PowerPoint in much greater detail, and we'll talk about that for a second at the end of the PowerPoint, and we can go into as much detail as you would like for myself to go into. Let's see, start off here. See, look at that. It's magic.
It's magic.
It's magic. To me, it is magic. As Dr. Burden spoke about, we've experienced incredible growth over the last two decades. To our knowledge, no other district has encountered such a long and steady growth pattern. For fiscal year 2017, we're looking at adding 1,849 students, or 4.2% of our population. Since fiscal year 2007, our QBE FTE count has grown by 20,481 students, or a 79.5% increase. So we've grown 80% over the last 11 years. For fiscal year 17, State of Georgia has reduced, but has not eliminated the austerity reduction that each school system with the governor stated, has reduced it with a stated purpose of removing all federal days from school calendars statewide. Secondly, he wants everyone to give a 3% cost of living increase. This budget does reflect that 3% increase. Budget also includes a step increase for existing employees as well, that equates to roughly a 2.5% increase. So someone moving up on the pay scale would basically get a 5.5% step, 5.5% raise next Our facilities are also expanding with opening two new schools next year, Brandywine and De Sana. We also have multiple construction projects across the district that have significantly increased the square footage of the district building. The increase was, has resulted in increased staffing needs to properly maintain those facilities. We'll talk about those as we get to the positions that are being added. In fiscal year 16, as you know, the board increased the milled rate by 1 mil to 17.3 in effort to bring the fund balance back in line with the recommended level. This was also done to assist with the opening of the two new schools and the staffing for those two facilities. We're pleased to present a budget which funds all of the above increases, and is also adding to the fund balance for the district. If you will, in your book, you also have these same spreadsheets. Basically, this is the general fund overview. Revenues for 2017, we're looking at $372.4 million, and expenditures, $369.6 million, leaving in excess of right at $2.8 million. If you look further down the page there, you'll see fund balances for fiscal years 16 and 17. Our beginning fund balance for the current year was $40,255,000. We're estimating that our revenues over expenditures for the current year will be $9.5 million, that will leave us a $49.7 million fund balance at the end of fiscal year 16. At the end of 17, we'll be adding an additional $2.8 million to that fund balance, leaving us at $52.5 million, which is right at the 15% recommended level.
Which, you know, this board understands this because it's a very veteran board, but sometimes we have to explain to the members of our public, it's so important to have a fund balance because in those months when revenues exceed expenditures, which happens in the fall, it enables us to have the cash flow so we do not have to borrow. So it's very, very important that we reach that 15% threshold, and now we are in very good financial shape.
And when you say viral, that's viral to just make payroll?
Just to make payroll, that's correct.
As you know, when the economy turned south several years ago, we made extensive cuts to the budget, to personnel everywhere that we could, and we did not raise the milled rate at that time, whereas a lot of other systems did. So they were made whole through that whole process, while we were trying to cut, scrape, get by, and not, and take as little out of fund balances as we possibly could, but we got to a point where we had to do something, so. The next slide shows the general fund revenues. Local revenues for the, for 2017, we're expecting $77.8 million, state and federal, $194.6 million for $372.4 million. That's a $23 million increase over fiscal year 16. Further down the slide, you can see tax revenue projection for the year. Right now, I have it growing at 5%. They're saying somewhere between 4% to 5%, they're not sure. We don't have all the exemptions in yet, and the digest, everything has not been fully added to it. Last year, it grew 12% on its own, so we're hoping that we'll get the five, but that's what we, that's what we built this based on.
Last year, they had done a lot of reassessments, so we're not expecting that big of a, so we're in the middle of May, when do we get the final?
We should, we got a preliminary a couple of weeks ago. We should get another fresh version of that within the next week or so, probably. I was looking at the, at the dates on the ones we had from last year, and we should have a much better picture of where we're at. You can see the increase. The increase for fiscal year 16, if you look down at the bottom right of the page, is $7.7 million, roughly a 5% increase, and the QBE former earnings, we're looking at about a 6.28% increase. You can see the revenue comparison, state and federal, 52.27% of our budget, whereas the locals, 48%. This is a slide showing the comparison of our QBE earnings. If you look to the far right, that's our fiscal year 2017 column, we're looking at $186.6 million. This does not include the local fair share that we budget, that will, this is just based straight off of the initial allotment sheets by year. Also with the bottom left, you can see the total austerity reduction that we've had over the last six years, and since its inception in 2003, we've lost $162 million of austerity that we've had to make up for with local tax dollars to make up that difference.
Can I ask about the local five mil share?
Yes, ma'am.
Which I, you know, when we were down, when Darrell and I were down at the Senate's Finance Committee doing our pitch on, on impact fees, which we knew was uphill battle, one of our senators came over to us after and said, you know, this is really what needs to change, is that money going downtown?
Yep.
And I was surprised that he would bring that up. I mean, I can only imagine the huge hurdle that would be, but is there any way we could ever do, I mean, I, I know it's a big thing, but for them to say that?
Well, the growth in the digest is, it's a double-edged sword. It's great that you have the growth in the digest, but that makes your local fair share go up. So, you know, basically this year, they gave us roughly $6 million back in austerity cuts, but then they took $4 million back in our local fair share. So we only netted two from what the governor handed out, or how he phrases it, reducing our austerity.
Is it housing impact, we never even look at, I mean, there were ones that said, you guys need to find a way. It's like, well, that's your job.
Yeah, it would be incredibly challenging, to say the least. No, people, people look at Forsyth County, you know this, I don't have to tell you, I don't have to tell you, that we have a lot of resources, so forth and so on, but you know as well as I do, when you look at this and you look at austerity reductions, the things we could do and where we could be if we had the revenue that we should, should be getting, I mean, but we were frowned upon because of the fact that...
Honestly, at that hearing, they were just like, you know, until your mill's 20 and you, all that, you can forget it.
But they said, they just said, if you guys need more money, you just need to raise your taxes. They did say that.
That's exactly right.
Although, we did, the senators felt, when we left, that we explained that our milled rate was low, but we had a good rate of return, we were high achieving, we had good rate of return, we had lowest costs for students, and they, they didn't seem to know that, so we did make a little headway, I think, that they realized that we weren't just rolling in the dough and spending it on fabulous things.
Right.
But ultimately, they just said...
I think sometimes people don't realize how well that we do spend our money.
Oh, yes, yes. Well, Rick's got a slide coming up.
Oh, good.
As a matter of fact.
For students, for sure.
Yeah. We have a graph that I stole from another school system, I'll say that out loud, because I liked it. This is comparing initial QBE earnings with the austerity reductions over the last several years. For fiscal year 17, we're looking at $239.6 million earned in QBE funds. We're going to lose $3.9 million to the austerity reductions, another $49.1 million to the local fair share. So from that, $239 million will net $186.6. Now, in addition to that, we'll add our midterm adjustment to that, that's not in this number, but this was set this way just so you could see the exact allotment sheets by year. Most people don't know that.
No, that's a good visual.
Right. That's why I stole it. Expenditures by function, this is a slide that we have every year. Basically, it's taken at by functional level, the percentage of the operating budget, overall budget, I should say, with instruction, of course, being the largest at 73.07, which is where it should be. You have a column for the salaries and benefits, operating expenses, and the total budget by functional area. So the total budget overall is $369.6 million, compared to $339.7 million in 2016. The increase is $29.9 million, and you'll see as we get through this, the majority of it is salaries and benefits, with the largest increase, one of the largest increases being in instruction going up 7.95%.
And I think what's significant on this slide, you know, the national standard for instruction is 65%, and for us to be at 73% of our budget for instruction, you know, 8% is significantly, I mean, is statistically very, very significant when the national standard's 65, and that's impressive.
Also, for 17, our salary and benefits percentage as compared to operating is 88.77% of our budget, with 11% being operations. So that doesn't change a lot from year to year for us.
That's been consistent.
Right.
I want to call it 89.
This is just a nice graph showing the big piece of the pie goes to instruction. This is what we were talking about a second ago with the expenditures per FTE. This is the comparison of the largest 12 systems. For 2015 expenditures, of course, 16 have not been submitted yet. We rank number seven out of the 12, size-wise, for $42,693 that was reported on our 2015 allotment sheet, giving us an expenditure of $7,597.77 per child.
Which is the lowest.
Which is the lowest of the 12. And you can see some of them are, one's $14,570 per child.
And which one's performing best?
And what's interesting is when you, when you see this data, it's broken out by instruction, by media services, by general administration, and you can see what's being spent in each of those functional areas. And for a lot of these systems, it's, some of them are just right at 55% of instruction. And the rest of it's in general administration, school administration.
Their top heavy.
Which is, you know, so I didn't include that because it would take up the whole screen, be even harder to read.
Yeah, I kind of did this analysis back many years, ever since I've been on the board, and it stayed flat, even though the, the growth has increased at a steady pace. So it was impressive to see that we maintained the same spend, and even the dollar today is worth a lot less than it was 10 years ago.
Right.
So we're really spending less than we were, even though it shows flat value-wise.
And when you compare that with the scores that we're getting on our tests...
But the fact we're spending a much larger percentage on instruction is why we're getting higher scores, too.
Right, and that's where it's at.
Totally correlates.
This is a sheet showing the overall salary and benefit increases. Of course, we'd be, we'd have, excuse me, for the new schools and for the level of growth that we have, we're adding 129 teaching positions, 30 parapros, two principals, assistant principals, counselors, media specialists, you can read down that, custodial, we're adding 32 positions, 11 of those are for the new, excuse me, 12 of those are for the new schools, and the rest are for the increased square footage of the other facilities. So that's why we're having to add all of those.
Yeah, that one really stood out when we revised our budget, and it really, and it really speaks to, and of course, Tom is here, and I think Tim, Tim Amerson's here, too. It really speaks to the amount of square footage we add, because it's a formula we use for how much, how many custodians we need based on the square footage we have on, on each school, so we didn't, we didn't just add custodians, we just added a lot of square footage, and we need them to keep our building to a standard.
The phone was one for every 23,500 square feet of a building.
Which is a lot of square footage for one person.
I think Mr. Amerson had said at one point, if you add up all the additional classrooms that we're adding on to the high schools, it actually, if you add up from Lambert South, all that, we're actually creating another high school, that, that many positions, that many spots, seats, so.
So the total number of positions that are based at a school is 211 for a $14.9 million increase. The average cost for, average salary and benefits for a teacher now is $82,500. About 44% of that is benefits.
How much, what percent?
About 44% of that number is benefits.
That's a, that's an increase.
It's incredible, it really is.
Yeah, because it used to be in the 70, 70,000s, the average.
Right. We spend on a certified teacher roughly $12,000 a year in insurance, health insurance.
That's a huge increase.
And for this year, insurance on classified staff went up $600 a year. We get absolutely no more benefit for that, other than writing them a check for $600 more.
We can call it affordable care.
Right.
I've got a word for affordable care.
Is the average teacher still 10 years ago?
Yes, it's, it's actually a T5 of 10 years, is where our average is. Of those teachers, teachers and parapros, 46 of those positions are special ed-related, so you can see the, we're drawing a lot of special ed children to the district.
How many are special ed, did you say?
46 of these teachers and parapros are special ed-related.
As much as our system is growing, special ed's growing even faster, and we all know the reason why. I mean, our, because our special education department does a tremendous job, and people know that, and, and many families do move here because of, because of our special education department.
So that's 46, both parapros and teachers for special ed?
Yes.
Wow.
Further down the page, we have other growth positions. These are the positions that are actually not in the school. We're adding a fine art specialist, an athletic and activities coordinator, communications clerk, an international registrar at the Hill Center, a transition services clerical at the Hill Center, half a psychologist, a transportation field coordinator because of the two new schools, two transportation clerical positions, a special ed facilitator, another special ed clerical, a payroll specialist, an internal auditor, half of one, a warehouse courier, and a network engineer. So the total for the other growth positions is 14, at a cost of $1.3 million. For the step increase, the total cost of that was $11.8 million, that was the step increase, plus the 2% is how that should have read. State help for non-certified staff, an increase of $882,000, that was the $600 a year I was referring to a moment ago. For people like myself who are not a certified teacher, parapros, custodians, it's roughly about $11,000 a year, is what the board pays. So the total increase for salary and benefit changes is $28.6 million, and our overall increase in the budget was $29.9. So we're pretty much, all of it was salaries and benefits.
Right. We're people business.
Yes, we are.
It's good to see that there are growth positions in every department here, generally speaking, because that, sometimes we think it's just in the classroom, but people from transportation to the warehouse, as fast as we're going.
Well, an example is the warehouse, the last position he hired was in 2003.
Right.
The last position we hired before this year was about nine years ago.
And that's...
We started out as a standard, right?
That's right. It's not really in every department, it's not, you know, it's, it's incredible.
And Rick made this point earlier, I mean, through the really tough times, you guys tried very hard, as most systems did, to protect classrooms, and you did not grow in other places where you needed to grow, but you just couldn't afford to grow. And finally, we reached the point where we're starting to create some positions that we've needed for a very long time. And yet, it should be pointed out, we're still spending less than the revenues that are, that are coming in, but these will make a significant difference to our system.
You just think, just warehouse in, in particular, with all the new schools.
Exactly.
They, they just have so much more of a load to get around, you just can't do that.
Right. This, excuse me, this chart shows a comparison of operations of $41.5 million to the salary and benefits, so you can really see where we spend our money at, it's all people. It's all people, labor-driven. These are the changes to the operational budgets. This is just comparing everything other than salaries through each functional area. The overall increase was four point six million. Instruction, the largest increase is there, of course, for classroom materials for growth and materials for the two new schools. Professional services increased. We have some staff, some special ed positions that's hard to find, so we actually contract those out. HMH digital contract, excuse me, digital content is new, it's eight hundred thousand dollars, it's K-12 English and Language Arts, and also nine to twelve mathematics. And that number can change before we go to final budget with this. There's still negotiations with that final number, so that could go down. Media services, with adding two new schools, it increased the amount of what we give them as what we call startup funds, basically to put books on the shelf. They can't be fully show, you know, have all their books at, at once, but it's to give them a good start, hopefully. Maintenance and operation, with adding two new schools, and the estimated cost of energy, its largest increase was five hundred and seventy-four thousand. Under central support, various items within the software budget were added, and as Dr. Burden alluded to, debt service, year one payment for the Alliance Academy bonds, one point nine nine million. This would be the, the way our debt service schedule is as of right now, that's the first payment. After that, it's two point four million per year. That's just the way the first payment for the first year washed out.
Did you decide, I remember you had given us different numbers, around two million, two and a half to pay for the number of years?
Right, this, this is based on the fifteen-year schedule. And of course, we haven't adopted anything as far as a payback yet, so that still can be changed to fifteen, twenty, whatever the board would like to do.
But that payment's already included in the budget?
Yes, yes. Now, the payment after this would, for the second year, would be two point four million, and that's what it would be through the life of the bond, for the fifteen years. A twenty-year bond, it would be about one point seven million for the first year, and about one point nine million for every year after that. But you just have to look at the interest that you're paying back over that extra five years also.
We just went with a higher amount, because we, we have, you have decided as well, we're twenty-one today, so it'd be safe, we went with a higher amount.
Right.
Could, could you, at some point, if it wasn't difficult, ballpark for us, like, every time, over the years, we're building schools and adding schools, we always have this number of, it costs about one or two million to open elementary middle, and it costs two to three-ish for a, for a high school, and it changes because salary changes and things like that. Could you ballpark at some point how much it really, because we're shifting some positions, but we're creating new?
Right. It's, it's roughly about one point five million for an elementary, and a little bit more for middle, and it's over two for a high school.
Okay, so I just wanted to make a change.
Just because of the volume, but it's around one and a half million to open a school, and that doesn't count, that doesn't count teachers. That just counts the bodies, too, you know, your principal, your APs, your counselors, your media specialists, media parapro, PE, custodians.
Well, to me, what I'm looking at is the difference, I mean, obviously, since some teachers will be moving with the staff, so they're not new, but we will have new nurses, all the additional, so like, from one year to the next, now that we opened two new schools, that's an automatic increase in our budget of?
Right, and I actually have a spreadsheet that has that on, I didn't include it in this one.
All right, just curious, because we always kind of use that number, and I want to be accurate, but within, within half a million, that's what we're at. All right, thank you.
I can send you that tomorrow. Now, the next slide is talking about school food services. Her budget, I say the budget, for school food services in fiscal year sixteen, had a deficit of seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand. We're projecting a nine hundred and forty thousand dollar deficit for this year. The big reason for this is if you look at this school food service worker budget line, the salaries for this year would be going up four hundred and fourteen thousand. What happened? Where's my assistant?
He's right there, he's right there smiling.
And you can see her benefits went up five hundred and sixty-five thousand. All of her employees are classified staff. On a full hour, school food service worker, we're paying a hundred and forty percent in benefits to match the salary.
Wow.
So that's where the money's at, salaries and benefits for them. Years ago, probably over a decade, we actually carried some of those expenditures for school food, and it's looking like we're going to have to start carrying some of it next year, a portion of it. Not all, but a portion. She's been using her fund balance, and she's, and they've been okay, but we're getting to the point now, with, especially with insurance that keeps going up, again, it went up six hundred dollars per person, and she's got over four hundred people, you know, and then the two new schools, and that's what's killing them.
I'm amazed it went this many years with having a zero budget, so it's.
Right. I said the same thing.
I couldn't believe, so this is like, when the second year where it was.
Well, see, our free and reduced is so low, that's what's hurting us, we're not getting any federal money for that. If we were, I believe, if we were at thirty percent free and reduced, we'd have a balanced budget. I mean, I can't remember what, where we're at right now.
Sixteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen? Ooh, so we're only half.
So, yeah. So if we had, at thirty percent, we'd have a balanced budget, because of the federal dollars.
Well, thanks to Susan Wood and the foundation she laid, and what value it's carried forward, because that's why we have the money to really do that.
You'd have to sell a lot of chicken now, just to make up that million dollar deficit for a dollar.
Made of Africa.
All grand things.
But I just wanted to give you a picture of where school food services was. Now, next week, when we come for tentative approval, I'll also have debt service, capital projects, and school food as well, to do the tentative approval on all of those individual funds. And that's it for the PowerPoint. In your book, there's a summary section. Most of the pages that you just saw are in the summary section and in the revenue section. Under instruction, when you start getting to these functional areas, you'll start seeing a bunch of numbers. These reports are run by function, this first one being instruction, and then by what we call object, salaries, benefits, supplies, materials, and it gives you the percentage change for each of those lines. And then behind that is the detail for all of the operations that's in those individual functional areas. So that's a lot of good reading in there. We can go at least line, if you'd like, in great detail.
We'd like to offer, you know, over the next week, if you have any questions, if you want to come in and sit down with Rick or with both of us, we will certainly make time to do that at your convenience to answer any questions that you might have. We want to make sure you're as comfortable as you can be before we ask you to vote on this first round next Thursday night.
Maybe we can try to be efficient, if some of us have similar, we can try to do two at a time, to save you some time.
Whatever you need to do.
But there is a lot of information in this book.
It's a lot of work, thank you for putting that together, especially the PowerPoint.
Yes. Any other questions related to budget? With the normal, we would come back for the tentative next week. I'd have to run into the paper for a week after you do tentative approval, and then at the regular board meeting in June, you would adopt the final budget, and the millage rate would be done in July, as usual.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have the Inspire presentation, Mr. Perkel.
Just quickly, you, you all are very familiar with the Inspire program. We've done this for now several years, so I'm not going to go into that. You know exactly what that is and the purpose of that, but we have one Inspire presentation this afternoon from Michael Satterfield, who is assistant principal at Forsyth Central High School. I'm very excited about what, what Mike's been able to do with his project throughout this school year. It's been of great benefit to Forsyth Central High School this year, and certainly will be of a great benefit in the future years. As a matter of fact, we've, I've already directed some principals and assistant principals to speak to him about what he's done, so I'm, I'm excited for him to present to you. So turn it over to him.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Burden for providing me with an opportunity to share you guys, share with you guys some work we've been doing at Forsyth Central High School on there last month. You, you shared in a presentation that Dr. Josh Lowe did about the Forsyth Central High School Alumni Association. Before I get started, I would like to thank some folks in this room who, without whose support, I would not have been able to put my team together, get this project done. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Jerry Perkel and Dr. Ellen Cohen. Their leadership and guidance and feedback really allowed us to put together a new teacher induction program, I think, that is, was fantastic. It was great for our folks, it was wonderful to put our team together to work on it. I'd also like to thank Dr. Lynn C., who through her work in professional learning, has really laid a foundation that we were able to build upon, so we could put together our school-based teacher induction program on top of all the great work that she's done over the years with new educator orientation and new teacher induction. I'd also like to thank Mr. Mitch Young. He, through his leadership, he allowed folks like me and, and Dr. Lowe to organize teams in our school, and he's really empowered us, and given us, given us the flexibility, given us the, I guess, the trust where we could put together some, some programs and some projects where we're working with teachers, and we really think we're doing work that's going to benefit students and teachers in the long run. And last but not least, I want to thank my partner in crime at Central High School, Ms. Michelle Dugan. She's one of our teacher leaders, without him, we wouldn't have been able to get this work done. She's been an integral part of this team, and really my right and left arm on those days in trying to get this work done. And I would have been remiss if I didn't thank all of those people for their support and their help. In terms of what we did this year with our project, it really starts with our organizational mission. You know, we had had a, we, we had a presentation a little bit earlier showing the new buildings and the construction at Forsyth Central High School. Not only is that an important part of what we've been doing to rebrand our school, we've also been working really hard on mission and vision with our staff and with our community. Really, what we want at Central, we want Central to be the place where parents want to send their kids. We want, we want our students to feel connected to our school and identify with Central, and we also want to empower our teachers to lead. Whoops. One of the things we've done as well, and this is really a foundational piece of our work at Central, that we've tried to, that we've used and we've embedded within our new teacher induction program, these pillars of effective practice are the pillars upon which we build all of our work, including new teacher induction. The materials that I provided, that, that much like Rick's book on finance, is going to provide all of you with all of the details for the new teacher induction program that I may not have time to present tonight, are built around these pillars. You know, we, we expect that all of our teachers in our building and all of our staff members are going to build positive relationships, establish clear expectations, design relevant engaging work, and then evaluate progress and communicate feedback effectively. And these are the pillars upon which we, we built our new teacher induction program. These are the things that, that we felt were critical for our new teachers to know, so they really could be effective in year one, as they started at Central. Why was this new teacher induction program important? If you look at the bottom of this slide, you'll see why. Over the last two years, we've hired sixty new teachers, which is about forty-eight percent of our staff. And we realized, after the first year, we hired thirty new teachers, I guess in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, and, and Mr. Young and I sat last year and started thinking if, with our growth and with our transition, with the number of new teachers that we're bringing into the building, we really need to be intentional and effective when it comes to new teacher induction, and so that's really where this program was born. We also wanted to build a program that supported all of the district and school bills that we have, including things like the learner profile, the systems vision for new teacher induction, our school mission and vision, and then our school improvement goals as well. What are our goals? We want to have, you know, when we hire teachers and bring them in to be part of the Central community, we would like a hundred percent teacher retention. We would like our teachers to be effective, as measured by their sum of evaluations. We want our teachers to be satisfied and fulfilled in their work. And we'd also like to see that our teachers are, are participating in professional life at Forsyth Central High School, not just during the school day, but outside of the school day as well. With this induction program, really, we're trying to, we, we intend on building a three-year program that's designed to maximize new teacher effectiveness. Like I said before, we really want to focus on those pillars of relationship building, setting clear expectations, providing relevant engaging work, and then using ongoing evaluation and feedback to support teacher growth and effectiveness. In terms of building relationships, there are some very specific things we did before our teachers even showed up in the building. We, we held a premium of few things when it comes to trying to organize new teacher life. One is common planning. We want those teachers to be planning with their experienced colleagues on what we call design teams, where they can work with folks who teach similar classes or similar grade levels in order to increase their effectiveness. We want to make sure geographically, you've seen the picture of our campus, and those of you who've been in Forsyth County for a while understand our campus, it's much like north and south, it's all over the place. And so we wanted to make sure geographically that we were placing our teachers in geographic positions within the building where they could collaborate with their colleagues and have the resources they need to be successful. We also made a commitment to limit the classed new teachers to five out of seven periods per day. And then finally, we wanted, we wanted to make sure that our new teachers were walking into a situation where they had a permanent classroom. We don't ask our new teachers to float. And, and with the amount of growth we experience, sometimes that's tough, but, but we have made a commitment to make sure that our first-year teachers have a permanent place to call home. In terms of team building, we start before the teachers come in the building. Some things that we do is, is we make sure that we ask our teachers to fill out a biography sheet. Some of these things are available in the information that I provided you. That way, as new teachers come in the building, our veteran faculty, our new teachers all will have information, not just professional, but some things that are personal, too, so it opens the door for conversations and relationship building on day one. During pre-planning, we, we focus most of our pre-planning time with our new teachers and our veteran teachers on relationship building. You know, we have a new teacher dinner that starts the night before pre-planning. We also have a cookout during pre-planning. We make sure that our new teachers have all of our gear, so that way, when they show up somewhere that's not the Forsyth Central High School campus, or even if it is, that they have a sense of community and camaraderie, because they know where, where they work. It's particularly effective when we send them to new teacher orientation, because the folks can see, based on the shirts they're wearing, who works in their school. And so that way, they, they have that relationship building piece as well. Last but not least, one of the things we didn't intend, one of our new teachers started a social committee unofficially, so we've had, we've had a crew of new teachers who have decided that they're going to spend a lot of time outside of school together, and that was an initiative that they undertook on their own. And that was Mr. Scott Cole, who works in our science department. I guess they've gone to one of those, those escape rooms in Atlanta, they've done trivia nights and all sorts of different social things throughout the year, so they could continue relationship building outside of the school day.
I played trivia against some of those teachers one night.
How'd you do?
Not real good.
Yeah, they stacked the deck.
It wasn't fair, it was not fair.
Scott stacks the deck.
Yeah.
In terms of technology, you know, the, the things that our new teachers rely on, the new teacher course that was built by the district has been an invaluable resource for our new teachers in the building. And we also have, we also use social media. You know, Ms. Dugan, who I mentioned earlier, has been really active on social media this year. If you guys are familiar with the Central Facebook page, you know how active she is in terms of making sure all our information and celebration pieces get out. She also does work in terms of meet our teachers. That was a regular feature on our social media page this year, so our community could get to know the new folks who are in the building. In terms of expectations, you know, we, we wanted a program that was going to fully support all of the things you see. And our instructional mission, you know, we tried to simplify it and boil it down to two numbers that matter. And if you look halfway down the slide, you'll see twenty-sixteen and thirty-one-eleven. If you've talked to Mr. Young at all, you know what that means. You know, twenty-six, twenty-six, when he walked in the door, we wanted to make sure that we had, we increased that number, because that's the number of students who participate in AP classes and exams. We also wanted to reduce the second number, which was the number of kids who weren't graduating in four years. After year one, you can see, we've gone from twenty-six eighteen to thirty-one-eleven. And I think that's a credit to all the great work that our teachers are doing in our building, and our kids are doing in their classes, and our parents are doing, supporting them. In terms of professional development, one of the resources that I provided to you guys is our calendar. We had a, we had a monthly calendar where we scheduled specific meetings with our new teachers based on the pillars. At the beginning, it was, we had meetings that were focused on relationship building. What does that mean? It means making sure that in terms of IT'S learning, you've got everything you need to introduce your course and yourself to your students and your kids. We transitioned to some communication pieces at the nine-week point, again, hitting on IT'S learning, but also making sure our new teachers were well aware of what they needed to do to communicate using their grade book. We also made sure they were well aware positively of Forsyth, and making sure that whether it's an email, a phone call. an email, a phone call, or a face-to-face meeting, that we were putting our best customer service feet forward so that way our, our teachers were, were doing the best job they could supporting the, the students and the parents in our community. In terms of ongoing evaluation and feedback, you know, we use the, the Teacher Keys model with our new teachers and our veterans. We also had some specific data pieces that were intended to measure teacher effectiveness and teacher satisfaction. We had new teacher surveys. And we feel like we've done a good job in supporting our new teachers because in terms of, in terms of teacher recognition, we implemented a Teacher of the Month program this year at Central. Two out of the seven teachers we recognized through the first few months of the year in their first year at Central. And six out of seven are between years one and three. What did we learn? We learned a few things. Teachers that are new to Central are meeting or exceeding our school expectations, and when we define those through our mission and vision, in terms of the quality of the classroom experience that our students are having. How do we know that? We look at our TEAC survey data and our observation data and evaluations, and we can see that as we go through and analyze that information. What are our new teachers telling us in terms of the support we're providing as a school? Our new teachers told us that we did a fantastic job as a school in the following areas. Support from their teaching colleagues in their departments, support from the clerical and custodial staff at Central, the quality of the training that was provided for new teachers, and then last, the quality and accessibility of the classroom technology piece. The teachers overwhelmingly said the availability and the quality of the technology here in Forsyth County was something that really made their job a lot easier and a lot more satisfying. Where did we do a good job? Maybe not as great as the first one, but where did, where did we do well but have some room for improvement? Support from mentor teachers, support for the administration, some areas in which the, the teachers said that the administration, they felt did a particularly good job with them, timely effective communication, making sure that policies and procedures for the school were clear, and then also supporting teachers when it comes to student behavior and classroom management. Lastly, the teachers were satisfied with the amount of collaborative planning time we were able to provide to them through the school day. Areas for growth. These are some areas in which our new teachers told us that we need to maybe redouble our efforts and focus on some things that could better support them than new teachers who would be coming down the road because we've got another, we've got another crew of new teachers who are going to be coming in this summer. Support from the counseling department, scheduling in terms of class size and course load, increasing the accessibility and availability of mentors, and then last but not least, increasing the amount of technology training. The one piece that our teachers told us is that we do a fantastic job of providing accessibility to, to technology, but the two pieces that they said they could never get enough training on in terms of using it effectively were their grade book, which was Infinite Campus, and IT'S Learning. And that's that. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Michael, that is so powerful, and I could tell it last night at the honors night for Central. And all the work, even though the counselors, I know what you're talking about in that piece, the counseling department at Central just stepped it up this year, and it was phenomenal to see that many more students applying for scholarships. But just the whole atmosphere when you go over there for the, the unions and everything has just been wonderful. So, thank you, this is great.
Yeah, I made it very clear when we went to Liberty yesterday morning, hearing their Teacher of the Year talk about coming from outside the county. And it made, she was very transparent about how she feared when she came into the county because of the high reputation that we do hold. Bringing them in and assimilating them is just key to their success. And so looking at the TEACs, you know, and seeing that, that helping is really important.
And what's really exciting too, Mr. Dugan, is, is that a number of the teachers who were new this year, and we're, we're going to transition them into mentorship roles in year two and three, and they're excited about doing that. And so that's one piece that, that's really going to help us to continue this and give this a life after year one.
We'll be interested to see how it affects your retention rate.
In terms of retention, I guess the last two years, as it stands today, last year's retention rate for new teachers was 97%, and then this year's retention rate for new teachers is 97%. And so we feel the relationship building piece and the induction piece and how intentional we've been in trying to make sure that, that these folks have the support they need when they're working, I think, we think's been key to our new teachers wanting to stay and be a part of Central.
I could see a new principal coming in, in a brand-new school and using what you've just done to build on a staff that's just really solid. So, this research you've done is phenomenal, it's great.
Thank you.
It is, and I'd just like to add, you know, I, I appreciate, you know, the honesty in it too, you know, at the end where you, what you learned from that experience and how you'll go back and make it even better because as everybody's pointing out, you know, that induction's so critically important. People want to feel like they're part of a community, they want to feel valued, and they want to feel like they're doing good work and that they have a team and people to rely on, and this is just really, really outstanding work. So, appreciate it. Good job.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on, can I do one more thing?
I can, yes.
Can I say this? Yes. Michael mentioned Ellen Coann, and Ellen's here tonight, and I just have to say, because Ellen is really going to retire at the end of this year. At least she says she is.
You got it in writing.
Ellen, how long have you been working with Forsyth County Schools?
Since 2000.
Since 2000. She has been, you know, I've only had the opportunity to work with her for two years, but you talk to anybody who Ellen has mentored or coached, they just love her. I mean, she's such a wonderful leader, she's a mentor, she's a friend, she gives great, great advice. And the thing that the people that have worked with her have said more than anything else, they feel like they can say anything, they can talk to her about anything, and she will coach them as a very non-threatening relationship. Just thank you so much for what you've done for Forsyth County Schools. We can never thank you enough. We appreciate it.
It's not just the staff too, Jeff. She has taught, both of us have been around a long time. Ellen is the one that would answer questions and take us to conferences, and I think, Lissy, I went with you to that one, and it was just, it helps you understand and make better decisions when you understand what's going on. She was a wealth of knowledge.
She gives a lot of great advice. She, probably the biggest piece of advice, I think, that is absolutely the best, is how she coaches our, our administrators to, to always be present. The visibility, how critically important that is for students and for staff, and, you know, check in on people. It's the little things go a long ways. You know, you realize some staff member that has a sickness in their family or whatever, to check in on those people, make sure that they know you care, it goes a long way to building camaraderie and great relationships, as Michael was pointing out, and a sense of family. So, again, Ellen, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Yes, absolutely. Thanks for allowing that commercial.
You're welcome. Okay, Dr. Davison.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
Lunch and Learn.
Yeah, I'm really on the roll tonight. I'm going to speak about this for a second too. Before I turn it over to Dr. Davison and the Lambert, Lambert team, about a year and a half ago, Gary and I were talking about the possibility of an alternative schedule for Lambert High School. You know, as we continue to grow as a district and we continue to focus on personalized learning for our students, we thought the time was right to maybe to explore some more creative, flexible scheduling. And one idea we broached was the possibility of Lambert maybe transitioning to a nine- or 10-period day where students, some students will come in at the traditional time, maybe, maybe others would come in later and stay later. And that's been talked about with the Lambert community, and we're not ready yet, we're not there. But we think what he's proposing today about this lunch and learn, and you will hear this presentation, is another non-traditional way of meeting the needs of our students. And we think it might lead us eventually to this exploring a nine- or 10-period day. Dr. Davison has shared this presentation with the other principals and high school principals. They're excited, they're intrigued by it, they're glad he's piloting it. We'll see how well it will work, but it may be something we will explore with our, our other high schools. This does not require formal board approval, but it is a significant change, and I thought it was important that the board members hear this because you might hear questions in, in your community about what is lunch and learn all about. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Davison and his outstanding team at Lambert, and we'll talk about lunch and learn.
Thank you, Dr. Dugan, and, and good afternoon, board, and thank you for the opportunity to come today and share with you some of the ideas that we've come up with. And I would be remiss if I didn't introduce our team here. We have Pam Bibic, our assistant principal, and Ashley Johnassie, and assistant administrator with us. These two ladies have done an incredible amount of work putting this together. But I also have to thank you as well for allowing us to be able to think innovatively. We cannot think about different options unless we work in an area or in a culture of being able to think flexibly and think about things in a different way. And this is different, but it's still very much the same. The, the day will look very similar, but there will be differences that you will see that we'll be able to offer kids without us, without really changing much on the bottom line, so Rick will be very happy with it, but being able to do things innovatively within the structure that we already have. So, we've called this the Lunch and Learn, and that's the, the tagline that we're going to use with students and with the community. This is what your, your, the middle of your day will be. It will be lunch and it will be learning, and we're going to make it very obvious in what our intention is with this program. Our mission at Lambert High School is we will align everything that we do for the benefit of all students. And that's one aspect that we want to make sure that we capture with everything that we do, is that we're benefiting all students. Currently, we are in a, a system where we have seven instructional periods. Monday, Tuesday, and Friday, we have a straight seven-period day, 50 minutes each class. And Wednesday, Thursday, we have block days, as you know. The way we're trying to meet the needs of all students, not only students that need remediation, but also enrichment, is really through that instructional focus period. And we've had a lot of different incarnations of, of ways that we've been trying to meet their needs. One of the, the feelings that we've had over time with instructional focus is, well, darn it, it's just not frequent enough. We're not able to get to kids enough. It's once a week, and we've not been able to have that daily conversation with students to be able to bring them along day after day after day. Forsyth County, we're known for having a very high level of rigor, but we also believe that that level of support much match, must match that level of rigor. And to do that, we need to meet with kids more frequently. So, during the last three years, we've been doing a lot of research on what's possible, what are other places doing, and what are they getting a big bang for their buck out of? We've investigated places outside of Georgia, but we really wanted to look internal within Georgia to see, okay, who's doing what with the standards that we have? What are the structures that we have, the budgeting and everything else that is in, is in the state of Georgia? So, we spent a lot of time looking at North Gwinnett High School, Northview High School, Mill Creek, we've had conversations with, that do some very different structures. And we've taken some ideas from each of them, and we've put them together, and what we like to call is, we Lambertified them. And that's what we've tried to do here with this presentation. So, this is a shift away from the current instructional focus. However, we're taking the same concepts of instructional focus and interspersing it through the entire week as opposed to in one day. So, there's a big, big benefit of instructional focus, but we want to just take it and use it differently, and that's what you'll hear today.
So, your big question is probably, how do you find the time to do that? And so we Lambertified the process, and we went to our leadership team, and we sat down, and we talked about what is most important to students and what's important to, to teachers about those instructional opportunities. And we found that the block on Wednesday and Thursday, and if you're looking at your screen, you'll see it here, that we keep those two days of block periods because it offers opportunities for our AP classes, it offers opportunities for science with their labs and things like that. And so we decided to go to an eight-period day. So, if you're looking at the schedule right now, you'll see fifth period and sixth period are when lunch and learn will occur. Every student will either have a fifth-period class and a sixth-period lunch and learn, or a fifth-period lunch and learn and a sixth-period class. So, this sample schedule shows you a student who has a fifth-period lunch and learn. So, they have a full 50 minutes of time that they can take advantage of opportunities that we're going to be offering around our campus during that time. Here is a sample sixth-period lunch and learn schedule. So, during that time, what's going on? Well, we have all sorts of things that are going to be going on, and luckily, we're able to use our resources effectively because during that learn period of time, we'll have a quarter of our staff available at any time. So, we're able to offer things like a response to intervention room. There we can meet the needs of those students in Tier Two and Tier Three of RTI. We'll have a math, English language, a science room, and a social studies center. These are opportunities we hear from our parents quite often. I need that extra help, my child needs that extra help, but they have things that are going on in their day before and after school. Students will be free to flow in and out of these rooms. Students will be able to even have their lunch in those rooms and have the help of teachers and peer tutors at the same time. We'll also have peer tutoring going on in other rooms for other subjects outside those core areas. And in our media center, you'll see in a few minutes, we're going to have lunch opportunities there, but we're also going to teach students how to set up study groups. We feel that this is a vital skill that they need to learn by the time that they are leaving Lambert High School because so many of our students do go on to college, and they need that skill day one. How do I pick out the people that are going to be in my study group, and how do we set up an effective study group? We're also going to have advisement opportunities. Our counseling team will have an advisement room that is available to them during that entire fifth and sixth-period time. We'll be able to offer things like colleges coming in with their speakers, we'll be able to offer college application season support, and time that they can sit down and find out, what should I be asking my teacher about whenever they're going to write a recommendation letter for me? We'll also have a roundup room, and Ms. Johnassie is going to tell you more about that. And then for those students who need a little extra prompting in order to make the right decisions and how to use their time in that 50 minutes, we'll also have the silent lunchroom that we can use. So, just these, just give you a few ideas, and then we're going to show you the map of the campus so that you can see a little more.
Thank you, Ms. Bibic. It's, it's very ambitious what we're saying, and you're probably thinking, well, how in the world do you make that happen? This is where touring some of the other schools was vital, to actually see it in action. Northview was the first place that I saw it actually taking place. Students, and in Forsyth County Schools, we assume kids are going to be good, and they are. They rise to our expectations, and that's exactly what I saw in place at Northview in this type of a setup. What you see in front of you is the map of the building. On the left-hand side is the downstairs view, on the right-hand side is upstairs. What you see as far as the bolded black lines, those are hallways, classroom hallway areas, those are closed zones. There are doors there, and there will be signage that is present there that says this is a closed zone during lunch and learn, you may not enter. These are closed, classes are taking place at this time. What you see as far as the green solid areas and the green dotted areas, those are open zones, and that's where students can access these opportunities all throughout the building, and it will be open to them. They will be able to roam during that time. They can go to lunch early, get their lunch, and then go to the RTI room, or then go to the math room, or they can go to the math room first, meet another student there and say, you know, I really want to go get, get an understanding of, of how we did this today. Go there and then go to lunch. You see that we have a couple of courtyards? We do actively use our courtyard areas currently right now, students love them. We have a courtyard inside the building just outside of the cafeteria. We're setting up one outside of our 3,000 campus, the, the wonderful MOD pod. We have a nice courtyard area right there in front, it's actually beautified there nicely. And then you see on the upstairs wing, in the media center, that being an open zone with study groups and other things that are taking place. Our building is set up nicely because of the width of our halls, I'll be very frank with you. If we did not have the kind of building that we have today and in the forethought of facilities and budgeting years ago when they set this up, we couldn't do it. Frankly, it would not be possible, but our hallways are large enough you could drive two cars down them. And it provides a lot of seating, a lot of other areas, and we'll talk about some of the specifics that we're going to put in these areas to make this work, but there's more than enough room here to make this happen now. And currently, we have a lot of students that simply want to get out of a big cafeteria. They don't want to eat in there. So, we have a lot of students right now that go to quiet places, and we have some areas right now, we've been kind of testing this out this year with kids, and they go into just areas within open halls, that we allow these open halls, and they eat lunch there because it's, it's a nice, quiet time for them. And so we've been monitoring this naturally with them, and they've been handling it very, very well. And actually, they've been thriving with it, and it's been really neat to see with a lot of kids.
I know my daughter goes into her favorite Spanish teacher's classroom. She would just, they go, she'd have class and they would eat lunch in there and hang out.
Yes.
So we just need to make clear that it's their choice. They could eat, but you know, there's a lot of time.
Yes, it is.
No room for them to eat, but it's just their choice, which is great.
Correct, absolutely, absolutely.
This almost looks like a college campus.
It very much has that feel.
They get the choice and the responsibility of going where they want to go.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so what you'll see here in the top three pictures are the types of tables we're going to actually have in the outside, the hallway, that long hallway upstairs. These are tables I saw when I was at Northview, and frankly, they're one-sided tables. And so you actually have them up against the hallway, the wall in the hallways. And then at the end of lunch, they fold up. And simply, it is not restrictive in any way in the hallway, but it provides a nice seating area. And so students are able to actually do that. In Northview, they actually have them all throughout the front of the building. I'm not advocating that. We have it in the upstairs, and so it's a very nice place for that. But there are other schools, many schools, that do this type of lunch and learn program that have those types of tables all over the place, and they work very, very well. We also see the media center, some of the furniture that we have there. We have an area also upstairs in that long hallway, we'll have some of this, it's not, I wouldn't say it's plush seating, but it's nice, and it's, it gives more of a cafe feel to it along the way. And also, these tables and these chairs also have plug-in devices for their BYOT devices, so they can charge during the day. Because that's a big issue right now, is being able to charge midway throughout the day. And it provides those ideas for study groups, just comfortable, cozy places to go for study groups. Again, all of these areas are monitored. As Ms. Bibic said, we have a quarter of the staff off at any given moment throughout the day. Staff-wise, this actually increases their time that they're available. They will, each staff member will have no more than three days a month that they will have lunch and learn duty. So they will actually have an entire 50-minute period during lunch every day that they're off. So it's providing more off-time for teachers during that time to have collaborative opportunities. They can sit down and eat a meal in more than 10 minutes and actually talk to a colleague and actually have that time that they can use together. They're giving up three days, but they're getting back 17 a month. And so it's a nice trade-off there, and so we've been able to map that out in what that looks like. And so far, it's been very good, it's been very well received by everyone in that way. Also, in some of the other how, some of the safety and monitoring, we're looking for some additional coverage for campus safety. We currently have one staff member who helps with, he's a rover, helping throughout the building. He goes out in the parking lot, he helps with the hallways and things like that. We're looking for some additional coverage in that way. We have duty stations for teachers that will be set up around those areas. The administrative staff, the secretarial staff, and the counseling staff. We've already had conversations with them. We will not be eating lunch during lunch and learn. This is a time where we are available for everyone at that time. It is an open time for students. That means we're there for our best customer service at that time. Everyone who's available is available for all the students at that time. And so that's a very defined thing. I will not establish meetings during that time. None of us will have meetings during that time. This is time that we are devoting fully to students in that way. They will be closed in open areas, and we've already talked to signage makers on what that's going to look like. We're going to have clear signage around the campus for students. The expectations are going to be set, not only with students, but also with the community. We have a nice video that's going to be coming out, a satirical video to kind of demonstrate what it looks like and how lunch and learn will work. And we have a communications plan set up for over the summer and how we're going to communicate this out to everyone in that way. Ashley?
One of the things Ms. Bibic mentioned earlier is the Roundup Program. And I want to tell you a little bit about where this came from. So I've been working with freshmen for the past two years as an AA at Lambert, and it was overwhelming, I won't lie. With our incoming class of being 842 students, that was our fall enrollment as of August, it was overwhelming to see that these children really need the most support, and there are a lot of them. Also, research shows us that students who don't earn enough credits as freshmen to be considered sophomores contribute to your most at-risk students. So we started looking the first year that I was on staff, really working with, what is it that these kids need? And every time we would have an IST or an SST meeting, it was the same thing. Time management, organization, and study skills. So based off of that first year's anecdotal information, we came together, and I worked with two of our wonderful special education teachers, this is exactly why people are moving here for us. And they gave their instructional focus time to work with our students who were the most at-risk freshmen at the first nine weeks. Now, I'm throwing some numbers at you that are not in the presentation, but I assure you, I can show them to you later if you'd like. We chose the students who were failing four or more classes at nine weeks. There were 30 students who we felt were severely at risk for not meeting their credits as rising sophomores. Within four actual meeting sessions over a six-week period, there was like a pep rally, and we were off one week for fall break. But in that six-week period, we remediated 30% of their failing classes. Just so you kind of know, they were failing 110 courses when we looked at them at nine weeks, that one group of 30 children. And then when we were able to look at them again six weeks later, we remediated them down to about 77 periods. We felt that was huge gains for them, and really, it was just by treating them like they were able to make their own change, and they thrived. So at the end of the year, when we met on our last instructional focus, of course, we celebrated. But these students, we had seven kids who were still meeting. Now, of the seven students who were failing, there were seven failing periods. However, it should be noted that one student was failing two, and two other students were failing one period each. But the remainder of these students felt that this was so supportive to them as they transitioned to high school that they chose to come to instructional focus and roundup every week. So, lightbulb moment, why don't we do this for everyone? And if we could do it every day, imagine how much more successful our student population would be, and they would be supported in that process as well. So that was the roundup thing that Ms. Bibic was mentioning. Also, high school RTI is a difficulty just due to the fidelity of the intervention and the time management. That is non-negotiable in elementary school. They've done a great job restructuring their schedule. But here, we have an opportunity to do the same thing so that we're providing interventions for students at a level that's going to enhance their ability to be successful in a regular education classroom. And I think that's really empowering to kids, and that's what families are really looking to hear. How are we helping your child? In addition, the advisement components are really helpful. Students really struggle with that, this is a different type of essay I'm writing, and how do I know what scholarships are available? And our counseling department works tirelessly to get that information out. But as you know, when you are inundated with information, it's hard to decipher, what really do I need to be doing right now? So this allows for more open access to our counselors by our students. Again, where they're meeting the needs of all of the kids. It doesn't have to be someone who's on your caseload, because when you're in that room, you'll be able to provide them the information that they're seeking. And finally, we do have a little behavior remediation in case we have students who maybe aren't displaying their best dining etiquette, and we want to provide them with a reminder. So we have that in place as well. I think the part that makes me most excited in working in the high school opportunities is what we can do, right? I mean, we don't think just in the first step. We've been thinking about this process for a while, now we're getting ready to start it. But what could the future look like? And as we move forward, we've done this great program, I think it's great, it's been a lot of fun for me. It's called Freshman 101, where during instructional focus, students get a guest speaker, or they get a video, or they get a lesson and led by their classroom teacher, really working on those core skills and communication that they really need as freshmen to be successful in high school. But what if we could do this for everyone? What if we had a sophomore class and a junior class? And then even a Life 101, which is Dr. Davidson's pet project, where we teach kids things that they really need to know, like, hey, I have a flat tire, what do I do? Or there's this thing called laundry, and I know it works, but I'm not sure how to sort, right? So these are just some easy things that we can provide them with some fun ways that they can be better prepared for both their independence and whatever role they choose to go into. Also, SAT and ACT prep courses are huge. And if we could provide students who may not have the ability to pay extortant amounts of money right now to go and take these classes, and we could embed that. That doesn't just improve our students' opportunities for the future. That improves our entire district's reputation, and I think those would be some great opportunities. AP test study sessions, I was lucky enough to be a part of one of the grants we participated in this year, where I attended three of the different AP, the national, the regional, and the annual forums. And school systems are doing a great job of collaboratively prepping students for AP tests. And I think that's a great avenue that we could explore in the future. Also, looking at positive behavior interventions to improve CCRPI scores. Peer mediation, this is something that we did when I was in high school, back in the old days, it's really awesome. But also, peer mentoring. One of the things that anecdotally students have said is that the reason that peer tutoring works is because they get it when a kid says it. So wouldn't that make sense to us if we pair students who are struggling with students who are highly successful and we give them that opportunity to mentor one another? And then, aren't those the kind of people that we really want in our community? Leadership seminars like TED Talks, and of course, TED Talks being registered as a copyrighted name, we wouldn't have TED there. But there's a cool thing called TEDx, and UGA does this annual event where they do TEDx talks on their campus, sponsored by their communications program, and it's where kids talk to kids, totally fantastic. In addition to that, communication seminars to really improve communication for our students. And then, this is the best part, what do our kids need and what are they telling us? And I love that I work in a building where we listen to those kids, and this is a result of a lot of those conversations. And then finally, our positive quote.
Again, this is, this is a culmination of a lot of efforts from student conversations. The principal's advisory committee that I work with at Lambert has been telling me this for three years. They've been saying, we need something different. We need something that where we can get to, to get together, but also get with the people that we need to get with every day. How can we make this happen? And we're talking about remediation and enrichment, getting to every student at Lambert to match, to take our supports to match that rigor. And that's what we think that we've got an opportunity to do. Like Dr. Burden said, I was lucky enough to share this with all of the high school principals, and they're very excited about it. But they're very excited that we're piloting it and to see how it works and what the headaches are. But we're glad to take on the headaches because we think that there's such a gain for students out of this. And we're just very excited to get started with it. So, any questions that y'all have, we'll be glad to take.
I just think that you all score so well on all the tests and everything, but to see this piece, the balancing piece, that you're talking to individual children that we sometimes forget, that that's important. It's going to be exciting to see how it works out that way.
I'm most excited to see how it will work with graduation rate moving into the future because we have, right now, we're working with our seniors and trying to get our seniors, our last seniors across. And I can tell you every year which handful of kids did not make it. And ideally, it would be if we could get to those students before their senior year, really work with the at-risk kids before they get past their junior year. And we could work with them earlier on, then they might have a better likelihood of making it. And that's what we're really excited about.
And as you get bigger too, it's going to be so much more difficult to individually cover every child in that school.
That's a very good point. But one of the things that's interesting is Mill Creek does something similar to this. They're a lot bigger than we are.
I know.
And so to, we really wanted to seek them out because of their size and how they actually do this. They have a different setup, and so it's not structured exactly the way ours is. But they had some very good points that we were able to pull on, and they are very large. They're very large, and they do a lot of these aspects. And so we're very excited to talk to them about it as well.
A few meetings back, Dr. Burden talked about personalized learning and where we were going with that, figuring out what does that mean? And this, to me, sounds like we're figuring it out, or this might be one way to do it.
Kind of a structure to put personalized learning in.
Yeah, it's a new way to check it out. So what is your timeframe? I mean, is this good to go? This is it?
We're ready. We're ready to roll. We're ready to roll. And again, like IF was, you know, we had to make some adjustment on the fly and things like that, but we're excited to do that. Our leadership team is fully on board. Our LSC is on board, our students are excited about it. There are students that have questions. When we first rolled out the Lunch and Learn program, there was some pullback because we weren't sure that we'd be able to put the block classes into it. But I'll be honest with you, the feedback from teachers and from students made us go back to the drawing board and say, okay, let's find a way to make this work. We've got to increase, we've got to hold on to the fidelity of those block classes because they really are important within the middle of the week. And so we went back to the drawing board and found a way to make it work, and it's really gone a long way to bring a lot of people back together saying, okay, I really like this. This works well. And so we're excited to see where it goes.
You know, we've talked about changing the classroom a lot and making the classrooms different. Well, we're now changing the lunchroom. It's different.
Yes.
And it creates, we're doing it in business. I mean, we, the older community that's working, we're not as social as the kids are. So they're having Social Fridays, and it's a lunch and learn. And it's intentional, it's very direct, it's like be a part. And for those that aren't very comfortable in tweeting and doing other things, at least understand how to use the medium that are out there. So we're doing it. And so it's a very similar method, I see. So it's not unusual, I know it's very logistically challenging for y'all, but it's not uncommon, it's not unusual in the world of what we're doing. So it's a new day.
All I can say is wow. I mean, it sounds like a great idea, I think it's a great idea, but gosh, the work that you must have put in. If somebody had just said, okay, let's figure out how to do this, I can't imagine where you started, so.
That's a conversation.
It goes to you, I'm sure. And it sounds like a great idea, though, I hope it all works out and you get all the kinks out, and then maybe everybody can do it.
Absolutely, maybe we'll come down for lunch. There we go, excellent.
Maybe do a mid-year update for us, make sure that we let us know.
We'll be glad to.
We can't create a room for you either.
Absolutely. The silent lunchroom?
That's why it's so exciting to be in Forsyth County, I think, because we, again, as Amber was saying, we do so well, but we don't just sit back and say, okay, we're doing okay, we're doing great. That'd be the easy way out. But for you guys to just take on so many extra jobs, it just seems like all the principals do that. All the, all the schools are just going in different directions and creating so many new and exciting things. That's really, really such a pleasure.
Well, in Forsyth County, what's been, and I think Dr. Cohen did a great job of teaching me this a long time ago, was that when someone doesn't make it, it's not a statistic, it's a person. And all of us, all my colleagues, we all know that. And so we can never sit back and say, well, we got to this point, but we're accepting this loss. We don't accept losses. And so we're looking for different ways to make sure we don't have those losses.
It's exciting.
It is, it's a pleasure to sit on this side of the table and hear all these new things, it is.
Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good job, thank you so much.
Okay, next we have future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they?
Yeah, I do, actually. I was hoping to talk to you about it ahead of time. I had a quick chance to talk to Dr. Burden and Nancy about this. And this idea kind of carries off of what Dr. Davidson just presented. This past couple of weeks ago, the ARC came out with a report talking about growth in the metro area and specifically mentioned Forsyth County growing to over 430,000 residents by 2040, doubling. And that's, not that we don't know we're growing, but I would like to put on a future work session for us to discuss creating some kind of a visionary committee. We have our strategic plan, we have our facilities plan, and those are like a five-year plan, and the very detailed facilities plan is incredibly detailed. I would like to see this be a higher-level group of stakeholders, many of which would be cabinet members and staff.
Lambert.
Definitely Lambert. Principals, some community leaders, millennials, perhaps even some county people, even perhaps other jurisdictions, maybe some people from Gwinnett, other fast-growing systems. Looking at the higher level of how education is changing. We don't know, two years from now or five years from now, given technology, how education's going to look. We just saw a glimpse of how things could change. So as we grow, not where the next school's going to be, that's Tim's job, but just how are we going to go with this? I've had people say, geez, if we're going to double, does that mean we're going to go from 35 schools to 70? Well, I say no, because we know that we have brick-and-mortar schools, but things are changing. The periods are changing, we have kids that we study in different ways. So from the education side, our expertise of how things are going. But then from the community side, what's our five, 10-year, 20-year plan of how are we going to do this? And do this with the community? So I would like to see that long-range, ongoing visionary group of people in a room. Who that should be would be who would want to discuss, and some of that we could talk about ahead of time, and then at a meeting, kind of kick around that idea, so.
Kristen, I had thought about that a lot too, because it does overwhelm you. Because Forsyth County is unique in that we are small geographically. We're not a Gwinnett county that can absorb this. So the talk about growth just absolutely is paralyzing when you think in terms of our schools, what are we going to do? And what I would like to see is, pulling on what you're saying, is maybe as a board, we hear reports on different aspects of this and trying to get together, whether it's understanding, and you know better than anybody on this board about planning and zoning and things like that, the areas that are going to affect us directly. What do we do facilities? Exploring, and maybe this is looking at other parts of the country that have a similar problem like we do. How are they handling this growth? Are they doing, you know, double sessions or whatever? Are they doing, you know, double sessions or whatever? What are we looking at? And even though we won't be on the board when all this takes place, and I'll probably make me around, but it just is something that you.
It's frightening.
It is frightening. And we've always been planners in Forsyth County, and I think that's going to be crucial. So I think that's a very, very good thing that we do over time.
We even talked about Dr. Bearden reaching out to his, you know, white people throughout the country. Like you just said, what other states are having that situation? If he could do that research and bring it to the table and figure out what they're doing.
A lot of its things that, you know, we've talked about here and currently doing, the hybrid model at South High, you know, this lunch and learn that they're talking about at Lambert, possibly having a nine- or ten-period day. And really maximizing facilities because, you're right. I mean, I don't think anybody on this board thinks, you know, we're going to be able to build, you know, thirty-five or forty schools in the next twenty years. You know, financially, you can't begin to do that. So you have to look at alternative ways of delivering instruction. You know, technology's a very powerful tool. A lot of what's going on at Forsyth Academy right now and our new, now it's Forsyth Virtual. It used to be I achieve. I mean, we're reaching a lot of kids, but we can reach even more. And I think it makes sense, you know, we've got to think outside the box. Because to your point, geographically, the counties aren't going to get any bigger. And so how do we serve all these incoming children based on the limited space we have? And it's not just going to be bricks and mortar.
Right.
It's not. So I think it makes sense. I mean, we can brainstorm at the next work session, you know, who might be on it. And, you know, maybe when we start the next school year, we can put some type of meeting together and kind of start kicking it around.
We could get a whole half-day workshop and have different people come and make a presentation to us.
I thought of Fonda Harrison a lot, just thinking, just with the way things are changing. I mean, that's just such a big key, school safety. I mean, just so many of our staff, but just going beyond that too.
I mean, we've talked brick and mortar forever. And, you know, our brick and mortar is very intense brick and mortar. It's solid. It's state-approved. And we may have to change the state thinking and funding to do something like that. I know I was inspired by more Oklahoma, I guess it was, when they had their whole school system destroyed, and they had to put it back together over the summer to start school again. We might can learn from some of those innovative thinking ideas they put in place to restart their school system. So we have to look differently at how we do school.
Okay. Sandy's got it.
Write that down.
She wrote it down. Okay, next we have action item. Tom Winnings, West Forsyth High School additions and renovations project.
I'm following those exciting programs. This is just boring nuts and bolts here. At West Forsyth High School, the scope of the addition is similar to Lambert minus the twenty-four classrooms, meaning band room, choir, and then we renovate computer engineering art. So you have the executive summary of the competitive process. I think we've got a fairly straightforward recommendation. Thus, the formal recommendation. It is recommended that the board approve Cooper &amp; Company as the responsible and responsive offer whose best and final offer is the most advantageous to the board as general contractor for the West Forsyth High School additions and renovations project. I recommend approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
To move.
A motion by Tom and a second by Kristen. Any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.